That you just keep us safe in everything that we do. Help us reflect you and all those things as well. In your name we pray, amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting today. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting?
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, next thing, we need to ratify the bills.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to pay the bills. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right. Any informational committee meeting, meeting, reports?
Ed's not with us today. He's a little under the weather. But the sanitation department, this past year, we had a sidearm truck in the budget. We put on conditional. We're gonna pretty much have to buy that this coming year because we're down to one spare. And we lost it for a while last week. So that's the one that picks up everybody's residential. So just for budget process, we need to look at putting that one in and be pretty firm with it this coming year. Patrick's getting prices. Well, it's built right here in Fort Payne. You'd think it'd be pretty quick. But we require a lower arm to pick up the cans than most cities do. So it's a special build. So hopefully eight to ten months or less. So if we had it ordered right now, it'd be late. But we just need to get it in the budget for sure this year. And Patrick's working with a new engineer up there to get that priced and decided again. It'll be on the fine compact, so we won't have to get it in.
I know Lynn and I met with Robin this past week or week before last. There is a green at the golf course that's got to be replaced. I'm not sure the dollar amount on that. Eight, roughly eight thousand dollars. So something that's got to be done.
They're all up to fungus and... The greens haven't been done in how long?
I think we determined the greens are about seventy years old.
So...
About number four?
Number four.
That's always been a footprint.
But you've also got some other things going on. The pollinators, is that what?
Yeah, it's Parks for Pollinators Month through NRPA. And we're doing birds, bees, and butterflies in the parks. It's a scavenger hunt. We've hidden little toy birds, bees, and butterflies in the parks. We've had eight kids find them and bring them back to us. And they've gotten their activity kit. It's going really well. We're doing bingo tomorrow, weather permitting, at the Rotary Pavilion for our Golden Cats Club. If we can't play bingo, we're gonna at least be there to serve them a box lunch. Getting ready our Walk with Ease program. We've got six participating in the self-directed study from IT. Flag football registrations are actually higher this year than they were last year. So we're getting ready to kick that off in a couple of weeks along with adult league softball.
Hey, good deal. Any other committee or department reports? Okay. Moving right along to ordinances and resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty dash forty. He was asleep, I guess. Okay, ordinances and resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty dash forty requesting the city's local legislative delegation to introduce a local act to amend section thirty-nine, seven, fourteen and thirty-nine, seven, fifteen of the Code of Alabama that governs the improvement authorities. You want to speak on that, Rocky?
Yeah, as we were talking, some in the work session, there has been discussion between the improvement authority and the city to do two things, to make some changes to the improvement authority. It has the shortest terms of any board in the city. And that is three years. In addition, the state statute, which allows for the development of improvement authorities, provides that no elected official can serve on that board. I am almost positive that that improvement authority bill was passed solely for the city of Fort Payne back in the about, in the late forties, early fifties. But however, it is not local legislation. It's state legislation. And there are now, there now is at least one other city, which I think is Andalusia, but I'm not sure, that has established an improvement authority. So it's probably not subject to change by local act. But we're gonna go ahead and pass a resolution asking our delegation. Nathaniel Ludenbitter's gonna work on that. See if it can be done in any way by a local act. If it cannot, then we'll have to look to getting a... I'm sure that what we'll have to do then is talk to the other improvement authorities and get everybody on board before we can do that to a state act. So this will be a fairly... Well, even as a local act, it can't be done until the legislature comes back into session, usually in the spring. And if it has to be a state act, it's gonna bring on more talk. So it's not gonna be a quick fix. But everybody appears in agreement with what they want done. So you do need to go ahead and pass the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution on this local legislation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion carried.
What we talked about was just the need for that because there's so many projects we worked on, we all worked on together, the different utilities that it's needed.
Right.
Well, the longer term is also needed.
Yes.
Those of you who've been on committees know that it takes you at least a couple of years to sort of gather all the history and know what goes on and how it works. By the time you get well versed in that, it's time for your appointment to be up.
Okay, moving on to new business. Discussion about installation of security cameras at the Alabama Walkin Park. What is...
Thank you, Slapton. We've got today, we've got a new meditation park that we gotta grant for at the north end of the park. And we've had some vandalism. And same like cameras is on, let's stop it. So Eric, you want Eric to...
Yeah, can Eric address that?
I've got a quote she don't wanna make some fly's taking a bad.
Basically, what we're looking at doing is adding two more cameras, like what we have throughout the parks now, on that north end where we don't have any coverage. The only responsibility we will have is just putting the electrical outlet in like we did before, you know, on the pole, and farmers will handle the rest of it, so.
It's unfortunate that we have to do something like this. But unfortunately, that park didn't make twenty-four hours before it was vandalized. We've had repeat vandalism too. So I think we've got coverage pretty much everywhere else. And that slowed down a lot of our problems. So I'm like Johnny, I'd be fully in favor of adding this to the systems already there.
When we had Christmas decorations in the park, kids were jumping over them and...
Right.
Crazy what happens to things there. It's just not respected.
Well, if you've not had a chance to go see the meditation park, it is, it is awesome. But when it's vandalized, it's not. And I think it's a great...
I'm like, most would put in the cameras there.
Hey, we've got a motion, second, to install these cameras in Alabama Walkin Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay. Also, we, in our meeting with Robin, we discussed abating the fees for the soccer program concession operations. They have got less kids, about half, is that not right, Robin?
They've dropped from about six hundred and fifty to about four hundred and fifty kids.
Okay. And so they're gonna have less participation with parents and concessions and all. And have asked if we would talk about abating the concession fees. And or...
There was never anything in writing about that. I looked and I remembered when we discussed that. It was basically just a handshake deal between the soccer people and the city council at that time. We would let them run the operation, and they would pay the city a fee. And we'd come back later and address it. And if everything was working, then we'd draw up a resolution to codify it. But it never, it never came back, so.
I think one of their biggest concerns is having to have kids at the gate collecting dollar bills from everybody to come in. And if we can eliminate this, then they basically are gonna let people come in free of charge. And they'll take the money they were gonna allot to this to pay the referees. So it would be, I think, a win-win. Like Robin was talking about, they're down forty, fifty percent on their participation. So I'm good with waving it. It's not a terrible lot of money. And it's still would allow these four hundred plus kids to be able to go in and their parents and grandparents come in free of charge.
I agree. Proceed.
Thank you all.
Okay. Number six is discussion about speed table on McCurdy Loop. And as I said earlier, I talked with Andrew Hairston and also with Ryan Craig that lives on McCurdy Loop. There's a, that's a cut through. And a lot of cars will hit that and go fast. And there's, there's a lot of young children that live on that road now. So I talked with Randy after I talked with Ryan, and he felt like there might need to be two on that road. And I asked Randy bind them to go and look. And he went out there yesterday and looked. And he says that he would recommend two on that road, so. And those, those speed tables do, they do work.
I haven't had anybody complain, other than Dan Goggins who hit one twice. And he said he learned his lesson and wouldn't drive over anymore.
Well, I think once you hit them one time, you do learn that lesson. And a road that, you know, it will slow you down.
And I'd like to paint them yellow because you can't miss them now.
Yep.
Better than the bump.
Yep. Yeah, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. That's on two speed tables on McCurdy Loop. Okay. Mayor, you have a report for us?
Well, I think everybody is aware that we have another wreck at Joe's Truck Stop today. I've been asking a lot of people how we stand on the rerouting and what have you. Not long after I came into office, we had two three wrecked right in a row. Aldo came up and proposed a high for dozens of different solutions. And one of them was what they're working on now. But I asked the question, how long will it take to get that done? And the answer I got was not here right there. So we built that little stop up there. And I say Aldo built that little stop up there top of mountain. City run out any money on that. And we have seen a reduction in accidents because of that, but it hasn't stopped. So basically, the way Aldo tells me now, things are progressing as far as the engineering and what have you. But there's still a long work to be done for any actual construction to be done because of the environmental issues and the structural issues, performance stuff. And they're saying, probably five years before we actually see anything on the ground, moving houses and what have you. So and we're, we're, they're nursing prices going up every day. You know, they're estimating thirty million dollars to start with. I think that the guy I talked to five, six years ago, we had to do it for a week. So we're trying to actually visit it probably before. But if something's got to be done sooner or later.
Seriously, appetite for Aldo, based on your conversation with Mr. Cooper, to do it in phases?
Nothing, we talked about it, but it...
Like just do the overpass initially?
If you do the overpass, you gotta have some, you gotta tie it to something. And that's the, the plan that they recently had, or they have now, ties into the south wire. So if you put an overpass, you gotta build a road to the south wire. And you gotta go some way to get traffic on it. You know, up around the concrete block plan or somewhere up in that area, wherever we go. There was some talk about possibly, we were talking in terms of the ten million dollars that we set aside, that is bond money, which is supposed to be spent X number of years. And nothing was ever finalized on that. You know, we talked about possibly setting the trust down to us or something like that. So we would tie that money up. But then on the same token, you've got state money and bank money, which you know good and well aren't gonna be tied up like that, so.
I think we can come up with a plan to have that much money by a certain time.
Mayor hit the nail on the head. It's probably five years.
Five, exactly.
It'd take a good year of engineering and survey. And then you gotta acquire the property. And Rocky tell you how long it'd take to get all the easements and all that.
Well, it'd be more.
So five years is, but if we don't start somewhere, it's gonna be five years from now.
Exactly.
And if we start now, which we're trying to do.
That's true. But when you start talking about acquiring, it's, it's a whole lot worse than acquiring right of ways because what you're gonna be doing is you're going to be taking houses. You know, someone had suggested, wasn't me. I don't know enough about it that, that it... I don't know how much money it would save. But if you just went ahead and could get the railroad to agree to a crossing there, that you would solve, you could solve the Joe's Truck Stop problem by putting in the highway whether or without an overpass. And if you, if you connected, then you could come back and put that overpass at a different time. But I'm afraid the mayor's right. I'm afraid that Lynn and Brian might make it. But the rest of us are gonna be long gone before we see that project. I will tell you how long that project, when I came back here to practice law, there was a hearing at the courthouse in September of nineteen seventy-four. And the routes to eliminate Joe's Truck Stop were being discussed at that meeting. So...
I don't think we need to give up. I think we've got good conversations going. And the problem with the thing at the top of the mountain, the brake check, is we can't enforce that. It can't be enforced.
We can enforce it, but we'd have to keep the cop out there to do it.
But I thought Mr. Cooper said there's no law that states that we can do it. Right.
Are you gonna write a ticket for fair to a by sign?
Well, by the time they pass you by.
Right.
Yeah, you're not gonna be able to...
Yes.
You're gonna have to write them a ticket after they hit the wall. No, they don't know where to pull up. I mean, you, you can follow them real fast with your light. You'll be there for, pick up the accident.
See the wreck.
See the wreck, be a witness.
What I'm saying right now, the state is going ahead with the project. I mean, they're, they're assuming that it's gonna be done. And so they're working in that regard. They have established a route, actually two routes, but they're basically the same, which is a route, not really north, one west, south. And they have started the process on getting the economical studies, the historical. Fire now, all that stuff started to be going. That's slow because we got one department doing this, another doing that, another doing that. So that'll probably go through a year or two process right there. And then when you start hitting the actual property by and what have you, most of the people that are involved in these routes are ready to sell the property. They've, they've actually called me and said, I'm ready, you know. And it actually happened.
And it's not the city that's been offering to buy this property. There's a company that got wind of this project and literally got the tax information and started sending people letters offering to buy their property at assessed value. And they were doing that all over the south east part of town. And that had nothing to do with us. That was just a company trying to buy a property to eventually sell to the state. So unless the state of Alabama or somebody with some legal jurisdiction approaches somebody to buy property, it's, it's nothing that we're doing. Don't, don't get scammed by somebody that's just buying them houses.
Well, and, and when it happens, it won't be us doing it.
Right, right.
It'll be the, the eminent domain proceedings will be taken care of by the Attorney General's office. And they usually get a local attorney to do that. But it'll be taken care by the Attorney General's office. And they'll do the appraisals, and they'll do the mapping. Because this is a state highway.
I think with the five years, what they're telling you, that's a, that's a pretty good timeline. We're lucky to have that, if that's what they're saying.
They're gonna be building something in five years. I'm satisfied that's as good as we're gonna get. And that's, that's something we've never had before.
Right, I agree.
Lot of work to be done.
That's in the right direction.
Five years, about a hurry.
We're further than what we're four years.
And I help.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have the guy that's most familiar with it running through.
He's been a very big help to us.
I appreciate the quarter of a million dollars they gave us on Fifth Street. Now, that kinda went by without a lot of fanfare at the other meeting. But I hope the people understand that, that that was, that was a windfall for us. We were basing close to a half a million dollars for that project, and the state's agreed to fund half of it. So that's money that we can put toward other projects now. And I appreciate, and he, pretty much single-handedly headed that money our way.
Oh, he did. Had the same thing with the Y S company up here on the Road and Bridge Fund. And he was one of three that handles the Road and Bridge Fund. He did the deal down at, now it's ours, down there. So...
He's been good to work with.
Got anything else, Mayor?
No, that's it.
Okay. We got one more thing before we adjourn. Our next meeting is on October the sixth. That is also voting day. So we're gonna move that meeting to the thirteenth, which is the following Tuesday. There'll be no meeting on the sixth. Do we need to vote on that?
Take a motion.
We've got a motion and a second to move the meeting dates from the sixth to the thirteenth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion carried. With that, I will encourage everyone to get out and exercise your right to vote. A very important election coming up to get our next four council members. So I asked you to, number one, pray about it. And number two, get out and vote. Anybody in the audit?
I just wanna say, I just wanna say that Andy Parker, Ronnie Warren ought to be congratulated. I, I thought that the voting was the smoothest that it has ever been at the last vote. And we had narrowed our polling places to two. And I heard absolutely nothing but compliments. And I'm sure it'll be even better this next time. So thank you, Andy and Ronnie.
Yes, thanks for making it.
Excuse me, I'm sorry I let you out of that, Don. I knew you'd be a lot...
Sound like twenty, Ronnie dollars?
I, I also would like to thank the other council members here on this council right now for the... We, we've had a really good council the past four years. And we've gotten a lot done. And, and it's been because of their hard work, everybody getting in there and, and digging in, not afraid to approach different subjects. And I just want each one of you guys to know that I appreciate you. And I wish you all the love in the, in the election on the sixth.
Well, as long as we're saying things like that. First of all, particularly, I thought Wayne's advertisement in the Times-Turner did a great job of capturing what all had been accomplished in the last four years. I've been here twenty years, and it's one of the most productive four-year periods that, that I have seen. Now, at times, it appeared a bit chaotic. And the reason for that is this was probably also the most transparent administration, that you got to see the sausage being made, as they say. And so that's why a lot of times you start down, run one road with a project that you're planning on doing. And when you find out the expense or the problems or the will of the people, then you wind up going in a different direction. That's not indecisiveness. That's the process, to steal a Nick Saban term. That's the process of getting things right. And I know particularly down at the corner of Fifth Street, where that building was torn down, there were a lot of different plans and a lot of different discussions, none of them bad ones. But ultimately, it became apparent that the people of Fort Payne loved that open corner. And being able to see the depot and the Opera House and the Pavilion and the City Park, all from that corner. And that's, so that's what the city council wound up doing. But there were starts and stops on that. And it's because they were doing their job and they were taking a look at everything and trying to do it the way. And so I know I've heard some criticisms out there for it. But if you want transparency, you gotta watch the sausage get made.
Well, it's been an honor to serve myself and with everyone, so just thanks.
I will say one thing, though. People don't realize that, that things don't go as quick as you would like them to because you've got all the regulations you gotta go through, you're dealing with the state. They've gotta have all the paperwork and this and that. So, you know, it gets disgusting at times, but in the end, it, it all looks good.
I appreciate everybody that we've been able to accomplish the things we've done. And we got to the point of being able to go one step further. And I get the reputation sometimes as being a little overbearing. And I don't disagree with that, and I don't know enough of that because I just like to see things get done. I'm sorry, but I'm driven, I'm results-driven. I like to see things get done. And I get frustrated when things don't go like I'm... I've been in construction my whole life on my off time from my other jobs. And to see the things that I used to see done in a pretty quick fashion in the private sector and how it has to gear down in the public sector because you're dealing with other people's money and all the rules and regulations is frustrating. And I've, I've worked through that to a great extent. But I'm, I'm... and I've, I've worked through that to a great extent, but I'm, I appreciate Rocky being here to help us not get in trouble a lot of times and we have, to some extent, argued a little bit, but my family doesn't argue, I mean, but we've had good, useful discussion and we've always agreed to disagree if we didn't all go the same way and there's no ten people gonna all go the same direction, much less five, but, uh, I, I appreciate the experience, I hope to be able to do it four more years and I love this city, it's my passion, my family's here. I've got one grandchild who lives in Nebraska and I miss her greatly, but the rest of my family's here and we have dinner every Sunday because I don't know how many more Sundays we're gonna have and that's the way I live in, in Fort Payne right now. I want my grandkids to be able to have things that we used to be able to do here that have gone away and, uh, I want us to be able to keep our families close and, and let them enjoy life like we did in a simpler time, but it's not that way. We just have to do the best we do to make it back that way.
I think we've worked hard at trying to come up with a plan...
Yeah.
...and steps to take and, um, if, if we didn't disagree, something would be wrong. We're all able to sit here and look at each other in the eye and continue to do the business that needs to be done.
But we all have our strengths and our weaknesses and we just have to make the best of, of all of our, everybody's strengths.
A good mix, mix of strengths and weaknesses.
I'd say a shout-out to our good friend Red Tiger who's in the hospital today. I wish him well, hope everything goes well and he has a speedy recovery. We're gonna miss Red, but, uh...
And just to let you know how honest Lynn is, she, she didn't hesitate to tell me for one second when I disappointed her.
Well, you did, but I still love you, Rocky. You quoted Nick Saban, something must be wrong with you today.
I'm still under the flare, influence from anesthesia yesterday.
I thought I was about to hear a roll tide.
I, I only do that when I flush the commode.
Thanks for everyone that was here today.
Yes. I'd also like to give a shout-out to the mayor, uh, for all his outstanding work on, uh, number one, on getting, on seeing the MAPCO, uh, gone on Fifth Street and his continued effort on trying to get rid of the O Hospital.
Amen, yes.
And his incoming mayor, uh, I'm gonna step right behind him and keep pushing to get that, uh, ISOR gone from Fort Payne. Yes.
Yes.
We're, we're gonna keep, keep going forward on that and I appreciate all the work he's done on that. Anybody in the audience have anything before we adjourn? Okay? Get the motion to adjourn. Appreciate everybody coming.